Could everyone take your seats, please?
We'll go ahead and, how we startled you with that? I mean, you should be used to that.
Every time.
Were you in the war?
Thank you.
You were in the war. This meeting's go back to order again, and we're gonna go ahead to mayor and council member items, and the first item there is report on ECCL organizational structure. Council McIntosh.
Yes, sir. And those of you who are familiar with the ECCL, Astero Council Community Leaders, I'm gonna describe that, but I want to talk, mention just one thing about...
Thank you very much. I'll hit the ECCL in just a minute, but I wanted to mention to you that I've read this thing we went through three or four times, I was always confused, so I asked Domer to help me on one sentence, I wanted to read it to you, because this is what it says. It says under "Community Gardens" that "The city wants to encourage the use of community gardens to increase communities' food security, decrease or slash/reduce food desserts, and improve health across the community." And I called John up, and I said, "What are we doing with desserts?" And he said, "It's food deserts." Now, I know the difference in spelling, when they say "food," and they're that close, so it's a "desserts" for me. So I just want you to know, this is more complicated than you might have thought it was. The ECCL, the chart, you have the backup of the charts on the wall up here. When Don Esley founded the Astero Council Community Leaders as the, sort of, the touch point for non-incorporated county portion of Astero, he had zero. He turned this into a functional, and I would consider a very reasonably political organization. They don't have all the restraints we have with elections and so on, but at the same time, he did a great job in establishing Astero as a portion of this community, an important portion of this community. With his retirement at the end of this year, they've gone through a wholesale work with the community in terms of structuring this to add sort of a non-event when he finally retires away. And it looks like this. The original structure on the screen would've had one person as a chairperson, that would've been Don, and he would've had somewhere around 60 direct reports. Very few of us could manage that, he did a great job. They've now decided to have one chairperson as the contact, and six people also on the executive board. There'll be a vice chairman who comes out of that executive committee. They have some very capable people, they will do a great job, and they'll continue to be a terrific neighbor for the city of Bonita Springs. I'll try to answer any questions about the organization if you ask.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Steve? No? All done? Good deal.
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Have they, well, of course, they haven't formed yet, though, have they? Maybe I better reserve what I'm gonna say.
Well, no, this is the structure, they don't have the people in those places yet.
All right, I'll leave it till we get...
I will keep you in suspense, once I know.
Okay, and you can go ahead and turn the lights back up, if you would, Bill? Thank you very much. Bill's our AV guy.
Nice job.
And when you're in District 6, you do AV. That's all the rest of it. Okay, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and bring up 9B, which is the discussion of the official conduct of one of our fellow council members. First of all, I just wanted to go ahead and preface this by, I really want to thank all the people who have stepped up and spoke on behalf of Councilwoman Simons, she deserves your support, your love, your affection. None of us have any problem with that, you know, God bless you for doing that for, she does deserve it, she does, she does a great job out in the community. No one, no one that I have ever heard of questions her heart, and her dedication to her community, and to her dedication to her constituents. Goes without saying, so, so, thank you. I think that that is fitting, it is most fitting and most touching. But we are here to discuss some other things, nonetheless. And I can assure you that if there was any other avenue left, us, under our codes and our guidelines, that we would've availed ourselves of that. You know, I think that council at different times, staff at different times, people's friends, that kind of thing, have done other things that, you know, the suggestions has been, why don't you take care of this outside of the public? Well, you can only do so much when it comes to that. And so, after a while, you know, you have to, and who knows, each and one of us may end up on the end of this someday or another, hopefully not, but that is the avenue that's left us, the charter says, it's very specific, it has to be done at a public meeting, and so here we are. It is certainly not my preference to approach it in this manner. It just isn't. And it is not my way, I think I've demonstrated over the last 12 years, it's not my way to, especially somebody who I considered a friend, to do this type of thing, but I think it's necessary. Also, I want to point out that our code of conduct, and our administrative code, and our charter, these are serious documents. I don't think they're anything to be taken lightly, I think that anyone who thinks that the rules that we have set up for ourselves, and we have, most everybody except for Peter here, was involved in formulating the code of conduct. We made that for ourselves, so that we could police ourselves, and that we could govern ourselves, and it was a contract with you, that we would conduct ourselves in a manner which was appropriate, and which was constructive, and was consistent with the charter and all those other documents. And because of that, I think that all of us were aware with what the contents were, and what the possible consequences were. We were all aware of that, we were all consistently reminded ourselves of that. And of course, like I said, all these documents are to ensure that the council persons have an equal, equal opportunity to contribute on all levels and all playing fields, and that the public has a written assurance from the council that we will conduct ourselves in the people's best interest ethically, fairly, and efficiently. And finally, council through these documents have agreed to accept the responsibility, again, to police ourselves and the behavior of the community. But we have to do this, and we will do this, as always, in a calm, in a professional, and as polite as possible manner. And I know that seems contrary to what gets written down, but this is the way we have to do it. This is, just is the way, in my mind, that we have to do it. And I have spoken with a lot of people about this, not council, but a lot of people, with members of the public, a lot of people in the governments all over across the community, and across Lee County and Cuyahoga County, this is appropriate forum. All right, so, our conversation today, again, isn't an indictment of Councilwoman Simons' love for her community, or for her service, or constituents' love for her, or anything like this. That's, that is not it, that's a given. She's well-respected amongst her constituents. So, what we're gonna do, at this time, I think that Councilwoman Simons, as she indicated in the paper, that she may, do you have a written statement that you would like to read? Okay, at first, and just to give you the kind of the order of where we're gonna approach this, Councilwoman Simons, I beg your pardon, Councilwoman Simons will go ahead and give a written statement, read a written statement, a brief written statement, and then we'll go on from there. Councilwoman Simons.
Thank you, mayor and council, and my friends, and colleagues, and staff, public out there, TV 98. For the past six and a half years of an eight-year term that I've served on our city council, my sincere and repeated intention has always been to bring forward and address the concerns of the people who elected me and the city as a whole. I firmly believe city council is obligated to inform and be informed, to make inquiries, to evaluate, to discuss, to make independent decisions, to trust but verify. I believe I have upheld the duties of public office with a primary commitment to attend to the best interests of our city, not for personal gain or favor, not to undermine or offend my colleagues in any way. Recognizing that differences in style does not imply or constitute disregard or disrespect. It is my hope that we can work through our differences, make good public policy, and address the needs of our citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. There's gonna be, this is gonna be in two parts here, and the first part will be, the council will have a discussion as to whether or not they find that within, contained within the green sheet, or contained within the attached green sheet, if Councilwoman Simons has indeed violated the code of conduct. And then the second part, after there be a finding one way or the other, the second part will be what council's decision is as to how they would like to approach a solution to that, a potential solution, if they do find that. Before we do that, Councilwoman Simons, I want to give you the opportunity, and council the opportunity, to decide whether you would wish to be present for these discussions, or whether you would rather wait, I'm giving deference to you, whether you would rather wait in the anteroom until we've had the discussion, it's up to you.
I have no problem standing here on what I've done in the last six and a half years, and the work that I've accomplished. I have no problem with that, and I have trust and faith that the council members here will have an open and fair discussion.
Good, thank you very much, well done. Okay, with that, I am gonna do this, we're gonna kind of do this in round robin order, I'm gonna start down at the end down here, and I'm going to go ahead and ask, all of you are familiar with the green sheet and with the attachment, right? Okay? I'm gonna go ahead and ask you all for the, for the first question is, is our substance at the end of our discussion here, this first discussion, will be whether there is, or there is not, hasn't been a violation of our code of conduct. Go ahead.
Just clarification on process, this is not a yes or no at this point, this is a conversation about...
Conversation which will lead to a yes or no.
Okay. I'm gonna address the first comments to the public, and the second comments to Martha. To the public, there was questions about why we didn't do this privately, the law forbids us to do that sort of thing privately, and frankly, Martha and I've had conversations about my role, my dealing on council, and I've had conversations about hers. That's the kind of conversation I wish we could've had, and for the community to know that that had been going on. So, for that question, we have tried to do that privately. Not more than six months ago, and probably within the last three months, I brought forward the code of conduct, and tried to review that with council without calling anybody's name, to make sure that we're all operating on the same set of standards and rules. And that is also a portion of a public-private conversation that we have. This next part goes to Martha. I don't think there's any question, I've always believed you have great heart, you, when you work with the community, you try to make sure that that community is represented well. I don't have a bit of problem with that. And we all have our quirks, so, you know, mine happens to be different than yours, but the quirks that I guess the council may be most concerned about is making sure that you're using time as efficiently as possible, that you're being as concise as possible, because frankly, you have gems of wisdom that come up that I almost miss sometimes, because I'm lost in the tangential kinds of conversations that go on, and that's just your approach. And frankly, I can live with that sort of thing, it just is not as efficient as I'd like. The most concern I have is one that I've been counseled, by legal counsel, not to approach, and that is a charter kind of issue about dealing with staff inappropriately. And there's not enough information in my mind to be able to say you have or haven't, but I don't want to start an official investigation, because that raises the ante. And when we do that kind of thing, the consequences are much more severe than they would be if we just had a conversation that did not revolve around that. So, I would ask that the council think about how they would approach this, because ultimately we all have to work together, and I want this to be a city that people say, "I like, I like what our council does, they do a good job, and they're all professional." Thank you for that.
Good. Janet, Councilwoman Martin.
I'm going to agree that I don't think there's anyone that will question...
I'm gonna ask you to get a little closer.
I'm sorry, I don't think that anyone will question Martha's love of what she does, and I think the question comes down to, sometimes, on how it's done. And, again, it's, it's very difficult, I regret that we're all having to do this today, but also understand that we have a protocol that we have to respect in many avenues. So I'm hoping that because of the discussion today, we will be able to move forward as a team, and as a council, and continue the good work that we all try to do, sitting here at this dais.
Okay. Councilwoman Slicka.
Yes, none of this is very comfortable, but Martha, I want you to know that no one, no one questions your knowledge or your intelligence, no one questions your dedication or loyalty. What we do question is your adherence to the code of conduct that we're all obligated to follow. And all I hope that comes out of this meeting today is that I am requesting that you apply the same dedication and loyalty to the veterans and the Lions Club to our code of conduct.
Okay, good. Peter?
Thank you. If possible, like our current President of the United States, I'd love to vote "present" on this. However, that's not allowed, and bear with me here for a minute, although it wasn't one of their bigger hits, if you can think of the Rolling Stones, their song "Rock in a Hard Place" for a minute, and Mick Jagger saying over and over and over again, "Rock in a Hard Place," okay? That's where I am with this, back and forth, because, and here again, bear with me a minute, when you look at this, I deeply respect the mayor of our city, and quite frankly, he's the president of our city. Now it's apples to oranges, we're not appointed, he's, but we are his cabinet. And I know, in the bottom of my heart, that he would not have brought this forward unless he felt strongly about it. However, going back to Mick Jagger and the Rolling Stones, "Rock in a Hard Place," I also don't believe that Martha ought to be reprimanded. So, back and forth I go, back and forth I go, and I am sure we will talk through this and work through this as a family, and as the Bonita Springs City Council as a team. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill?
Thank you, Ben. I received an email on July 27th, public information, from the city manager in reference to Martha. Oh, I'm sorry. I received an email, I believe the council was completely copied on it, in reference to Martha. I thought about it, I did not know about this until Friday, when I was able to read my agenda on the computer. I, I have a slightly different take in terms of Martha, in terms of who is responsible to control the meeting, and it's the chair. Ben, I've been here, this is my fifth year, and the chairman has the responsibility to shut us down, pick us up, drop us off, whatever, that's his responsibility. Martha is, is the most dedicated person to the people that I've probably ever seen, because she doesn't miss a trick. And I'm in no mood to do anything to her, other than to suggest that perhaps the chair and Martha can work together to solve any of those small problems. As far as the staff is concerned, I don't know any, I'm not party to any of that information, but I do not believe that Martha should be penalized for her behavior, even though, I probably don't talk enough, but it's okay, but I understand where she's coming from, and I would hope that we could resolve this in a favorable manner, so that we can go on with the business of the city.
Okay, council, so far as the first request being of, and I'm not gonna comment much on this, mainly because I think I've said enough in this paper. These, these issues are issues that I have noticed in the meeting, that I have tried again, and again, and again, and again, to go ahead and be sure that everyone follows the same rules. I have to say that council persons, each and every one of you, except for Martha, always find recognition from the chair, never interrupt, they do all these things in the right process, and that's the right part. So I have to, I'm gonna ask you, as a conclusion to this, is, do you find, am I tripping? Or, you're right? Or is there a problem with some of the conduct during the meetings?
Do you wanna do it?
I'd just like to know your opinion, if, and if your opinion is, the conduct in the meetings is fine, or gee, Ben, it's your fault because you don't do anything about it? Kind of think this is doing something about it, but go ahead.
So you want the same process?
Same process, go right ahead.
Where, old adage, where there's smoke, there's fire. I'm concerned about things outside of this room, I don't want an investigation, but I am concerned that we make sure that staff is able to maintain its appropriate chain of command. I want to make sure that we have an efficient and effective way of doing it without inhibiting freedom of speech. I think this is a clear warning that there are some issues that council wants to attend to, and I think some of the people, and the citizens as well, want attended to. So I would vote that yes, there is an issue we need to address.
Okay, so, that, would you say that there's, my allegation that there's been consistent disruptive behavior during the meetings? Rest or no?
Yes.
Yes. Janet? Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Present. No.
No, you'll say no, okay. Bill?
Again, Ben, and I've been here for a reasonably long time, I believe the chairman is, has the control, and it's not that you haven't tried, you've given a lot of effort to trying to accomplish something, I understand that.
Okay.
But by the same token, I don't think it rises to the level that, at least from what I know, to, to do something to a fellow council person, and I would ask Martha for her cooperation in the future, to help Ben get through the meeting, because he has to do so many different things that we don't have to do, we just have to sit here, and then when he asks a question, we answer it. But I think that, I cannot do anything to harm her in any way, other than the fact is that we need to work together, which everybody's mentioned.
So you would, so you would say that there has been no disruptive behavior?
Well, it all depends, either disruptive...
That's a difficult question, Bill.
Not to, not to do what we're doing right now, I think it could've been done in some other fashion.
So, so the answer's no?
No.
Okay. I obviously think that there was some disruptive behavior, but go ahead, go ahead.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I do want to say something.
Go right ahead.
Are you sure?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, okay. Audrey, I go back to Audrey again, saying I'm the new guy, but I am gonna invoke that again here, one more time, for the purposes of saying, "I have not been on this body for a long time." The time that I have been here, no, I have not seen disruptive behavior, I understand it gets heated, there's a difference of opinion, there's a free-flowing dialogue, I see it and I sense it, but from, from sitting in this chair for the few months that I have, I have not seen it, so I understand this goes back before my time.
Okay, thank you very much. So, so council, if we were to put it to a vote, it looks like that we would have four council persons that think that there has been some disruptive behavior, and we're not saying to what degree that there has been disruptive behavior, and I understand how, and this is part of what has caused me to come to this point right here, is that I receive a lot of phone calls from a lot of people. Telling me, "Why don't you do something about that?" And, my God, I've tried, I've tried, I don't think I run a bad meeting, I think I'm pretty good at it, and I think I do a pretty tactful job of it, maybe a little too tactful. And I can change that, all right? I mean, I am capable of changing that, but I'm gonna stand by my assertion that, you know, and I have to tell you, today, Councilwoman Simons, you have done a beautiful job. You've done a wonderful job today. So I think you're quite capable, quite capable, of conducting yourself in a very professional and consistent manner, and I really so appreciate that when you do that. You are of great assistance, like the rest of them, but you have your moments, more than a few. So, that's that, and so we'll go on from that to just say, council, and I don't know, Martha, I'm gonna ask you a question. Do you, would you say that, would you say that some of your behavior isn't consistent with the code of conduct?
I think I already gave my statement, but I would say that my style at times is irritating, and, you know, my mom says that, too, you know? But I think you just pointed out that it's possible, sometimes, mayor, I'll be asking a question, or talking to another council member through your chair, and if you need to redirect me, I'd be more than happy to comply with that redirection, because you are the chair, and I respect that, okay? If you see what I do today, you can count that that will happen, okay? All right? You can trust that.
So, you're making a commitment at this time?
I make, yes, I will make a commitment to you, but...
Regardless of who's sitting in this chair, regardless, and it's not about me, regardless of who's sitting in this chair, that you will recognize the chair, and yield to the chair when they're trying to take, to keep order, because that's really what's at issue. It's very important to our system that that happened. Everyone else is capable, everyone else does that.
Okay, when, I'm not quite sure, I guess this is where this happens, is, when I have the floor, and can, you know, quickly, I will try to quickly get through my points. When the floor, if you just take the floor, and I'm not finished, or, I want to finish, I want to get to where we need, you know, my question's finished, and you obviously know that I'm not gonna ask questions I don't really know the answer to, sometimes this is for the public. I respect the chair, I will go and study, again, Robert's Rules of Order, and if we want to be that, you know, point of order and all that kind of stuff, which gets really boring, I will do that. To me, civility sometimes is not appropriate, and I don't mean that, yes, I don't mean that in a context where we're yelling and throwing stuff across the dais. Sometimes, we are human beings up here, and sometimes there's a place for indignation, you know, when something is unjust, I think it can be done in a professional manner, but that's not to mean that I disrespect your chair, or any of the council members here. There are sometimes very emotional issues that come across this dais, and always being sweet and nice and smiling isn't the appropriate way to address that. That doesn't mean that I disrespect you, or the chair.
Well, and, Councilwoman, I find it a little disturbing that you don't recognize that that's not the issue. That's not the issue at all. I think it's wonderful that you have an opinion, I think it's wonderful that you ask questions, probing questions, your opinions don't bother me, your questions don't bother me. It's, it's that, it is this job, and you can look in the charter, and in our code of conduct, and everything else, and it is my job to try to go ahead and get, get the issue, make sure everybody stays on issue, and to make sure that, that, you know, periodically, I have to interrupt and ask, ask a question of somebody, I have to go, "Wait, Peter, did you mean this or that?" Or, "Look, I think we've went over that enough," that it is, it is within there, and I can check with a parliamentarian, and it is the mayor's job to go ahead and roll that along, and to be sure that these questions are pertinent, and that you don't change subjects, and that you don't do certain things. And plus, the interrupting part of it doesn't have anything to do. And so far as civility, it should always be simple. You can be passionate, and I think, I'm gonna use Bill as an example, because he loves me to do that so much. Bill gets as passionate as anyone I know. Bill gets passionate, he gets indignant, he will lecture us, but you know what? That's okay, because you always wait to get recognized, you always demand, when it's your time to have your speech, and if someone interrupts you, you call them into question, you wait, "Wait, I have the floor." Do you not? Do you not? And that's, that's what I need to have. I need to be able to know, or not, that I'm going to get that kind of cooperation, the chair, whether I'm here, or whether Steve's here, or the next mayor, gets that kind of cooperation, because if we don't, if everybody does that, if everyone does that, what are we gonna have? That's my concern, that's my concern. And there you have it. So, we'll go on from there. Council? Yes, Steve?
I think that's a legitimate concern, I do believe Councilwoman Simons clearly understands the issues that we have, but it's only one part.
one part of the issue. The other part of the issue is what happens with staff and how she conducts herself outside of public eye dealing with the people. And I don't have firsthand information. What I have is a lot of secondhand comments and things that I hear through the staff and through the city. So that's more, that really concerns me more, Martha, than what happens here at the dais, because that clearly starts to impede and impinge on the charter itself. But I'll say it the third time, I don't want to go into that kind of investigation. What I'd like to do, and I'm not making a motion particularly, but the city attorney has allowed us a number of things that are options, and one of them is to postpone any kind of action, which would certainly give us an opportunity to see if there's a change in behavior and a change in terms of what the city staff sees and what they believe is appropriate for them. To me, that's the appropriate way. The other, no action, I think we've already said, there's something here that needs to be changed. So if it comes to a motion, I will probably make that the level of consequence.
Okay. And to just to point out something here, in our charter, which everyone seems to respect, because I get beat over the head with it on a pretty constant basis, section 20 says prohibitions. And I think prohibitions is pretty clear. Prohibitions means, don't do it. It doesn't mean sometimes, it doesn't mean, eh, it's a little shady area. It means prohibitions. And when it, it's pretty clear that although council may express its views freely and discuss with the city manager, it says here that the manager should deal with the city office employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the city manager solely through the city manager. That's it.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. And so, any leeway on that? It's a good system. It's a good system. So if anything comes out of this today, it's going to be two things. So far as my conduct and so far as I'm going to conduct myself, is that when it comes to that, I think that all of us, when we go to contact or ask somebody for something or ask, whether it's their advisory council, whatever it is, you need to tell whoever's here, whether it's John or whether it's Carl, hey, I need to have this information, or I'm going to ask this person to do something. Is this okay with you? Is this consistent with your policies or the policies that council has injected? And is it consistent with what your directions to these people have been? Because if we don't do that, we've got seven people up here going around, Carl has no idea what's going on. And I'm going to ask John, John, is that a system that can work?
Not only can it work, but it does work on a very consistent basis. I'm reluctant to talk about examples beyond my present capacity, you know, acting as interim city manager in Carl's absence. I don't want to talk about things that may have happened before, but I can tell you that in the last two weeks, there are multiple occasions when various councilmembers have come to us, come to me, to ask about specific inquiries or requests or complaints relative to staff members. And in each case, it gave me the opportunity to make sure that what they were asking for, for example, was consistent with prior council direction, that it wasn't a duplication, for example, of something, of some other effort that might have been going on, and to direct staff so that their time was used efficiently. It happens, it happens regularly and happens efficiently, and I'm sure we can do that with all councilmembers.
Good. Good. Excellent. Okay, so, and so far as the conduct in the meetings, since I think that what Bill has said and what some of the public has said, that gee, it's up to the mayor to maintain order, I will. All right? I will. And if there's a call to order, if there's a call to order, it will be put in the minutes from now on. It will be placed in the minutes as per Roberts Rules of Order. Okay? I just want everybody to know that. That's just the way it's going to be, including myself. Council is quite capable, through a point of order, of finding me the same way, that I've done something wrong, and I'm completely okay with that. It's the way it ought to be. It's the way it ought to be. And overall, I'm proud of your conduct, stuff like that. The only thing that I'll leave here is with one thing, if council, do you want our, what do you, you need to tell, give some instruction here, do you want to give an unofficial warning to the councilwoman? Or are you content to do nothing? What's your pleasure or displeasure?
Well, I've already made the comment. If these are the, if these are the options we have on consequences, then I would ask for postponement of action for six months to gauge whether Councilwoman Simons has been able to correct the actions with staff particularly, but with council as well. That's my motion.
Second then.
So there's a motion and a second? And did you get that motion? Okay? Okay? And, and I'm, not to push this, but I think that the, do you want to leave it unspoken that there is some problem there? You won't say what level, but you wouldn't be saying that if there wasn't, right?
Wouldn't have made the motion if I didn't think there was an issue.
Okay. All right. I just, I want that clear, because for my own sanity, if I didn't create this whole thing. Sorry. All right, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any other comment? Yes?
Wait a minute, Martha, let me say something.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Bill?
I think that I can't support this motion, and the reason why I can't is because there is another alternative. And if you look down on number three, require the person to make an apology. I think she's already apologized, and I think we should end it and carry on for six months to check on somebody. It's like, you know, it's, I think it has to be done today, and my recommendation would be, Martha's already apologized in so many words, let's leave it at that. We don't have to pursue this thing for six months. My gosh.
Pete?
I was just going to say, and based on the clarification, I'm going to withdraw my second to that motion.
My motion still stands.
Motion still stands. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second. There's motion and a second? Any other comments? Yes, Martha?
I have a question about process. Just, do I get to vote? Because I understand that a mayor in the city of Port St. Lucie voted to censor herself, so I think she got to vote in the proceeding. And the other thing is, yes, you know, you can count on that. I just, I want to be effective. I don't want to be sort of with a Damocles sword hanging over my head, because I just want to be able to serve this city, this body, and the citizens who elected me. And it's going to be difficult, and I'll be rendered rather ineffective. I will promise you, I will go to both the city attorney and the city manager and have a good discussion with them, okay? And we'll go over some of whatever might be misunderstandings or facts or whatever they have, because some of this was, I found out about on Friday at 4:30, okay? Got the weekend. I spoke to the city attorney Monday afternoon at about 4:30. She was very busy. Yesterday, I worked 16 hours in the polling place, so I really haven't had a lot of time to prepare, tired to the bone. And I will make that promise to you, that I will go and have a very rigorous and vigorous conversation with them, okay? And honest, because, you know, I'm honest with y'all, so, okay?
But towards Bill's point, and you know what? We've never went into depth on this. We probably, I think that the council probably has wanted to for a while, so I have to take this opportunity to do so. Bill referred to that you had in fact apologized. You haven't apologized for doing anything, because you really don't think you did anything, do you? Or do you?
I have obviously irritated you, Mayor, and I've irritated my fellow councilmembers. I said to you that I am not sure where the line falls, where you yield the floor, not yield the floor. We've had several different styles of running the meeting. If we want to tighten up the meeting, we want to talk to the city attorney and city manager's office. If I've made any transgressions, if there are misunderstandings, that I'm sorry for misunderstanding. I don't know that what these side of the meeting things are about, so I'd like to talk to them, okay?
Okay.
Do you want, do you want a public apology from me?
Martha, I'm, it's hard, if someone doesn't recognize that they have done things within the meeting, context of the meeting, and I'll leave that other stuff aside, in the context of the meeting that have been disruptive. If they don't think they're doing anything wrong, how can they get better? How can they get, how can they do a better job if they don't think they did anything wrong? That's just, that's what's disturbing for me. And you and I have had a conversation towards this end a long time ago, and, you know, got better for a while, but it's just, it's, and I can, I can take care of it, but I'm just going towards Bill's thing that, oh, Martha apologized. No, you didn't. You don't think you did anything wrong. And if you don't think you did anything wrong, that's fine. That's fine. But I think that that goes to the point that then council has to make a decision of whether you didn't. So we can leave it at that.
Ben?
Yes?
When a person apologizes, it comes from a person, so sometimes it may not sound like an apology in the same way that you may think of it. And I really think that Martha has expressed herself, and listen, the other thing is about the untold things from the staff that I don't know anything about, okay? I think I would want to know, if I was, had this thing facing me, I'd want to know who the staff was, who, and make sure that you sit down with people and close the door and you discuss it and come to a solution. But to continue this thing on, Ben, is not good for any of us, and that's...
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm not legal counsel, but I've lost sleep over this, and I've spent a lot of time trying to understand what the rules are. The closer you get to that investigation, the more serious the consequences become. What I've asked for is an informal look at how people believe she acts. If you start asking, am I wrong? If you start asking for an investigation to bring people in, all of a sudden you've upped the ante to the point where I don't think you want it.
That's a good point.
Yes, sir.
That's not what I'm suggesting. I think most people that we have in our city are reasonable people, and I do find that negotiating, sitting down and discussing human relations is so important today. And for us to be up here in a public meeting with the cameras on, to chastise, to do all things to one person, put yourself in her place, and that's called empathy, and she's been, she's in a situation that's very precarious from her perspective, and it's sad that we have to continue this, why don't we just accept what she said as an apology and move on?
Because it's not. And what is...
Well, that's your opinion, Ben. You're entitled to that.
It's not. What is your motion, sir?
My motion was to use postponement of any action for six months to make sure the Council on Simons has changed behaviors both at the dais and with the city staff.
Is there a second to the motion?
Checking it already.
There's a motion and a second, and we'll go ahead and put this to bed here. Any other further comment?
Yes, I have asked.
Janet? Then I'll come to you, Martha.
I think that today has served to be very uncomfortable for everyone involved, for staff, for our residents, and surely for all of us, and I agree, I've lost sleep over this too. But I understand why the mayor put this on the agenda also. I do understand that. And I think that this serves as a wake-up call, except for all of us, and my hope is that corrections will be made and that we all see how precarious that, you know, everything that we do is. And I said, it's just been, it's very difficult, but I understand the mayor and I will support the mayor in his running of a tighter and stronger meeting.
All right. Martha?
Do I get to vote?
Yes, can I answer the question?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. And yes, there's no special gain or loss on the motion, so you would be able to vote on this particular motion.
Okay. Everyone understands the motion? Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
No.
Councilwoman Simons?
No.
Councilman Longcart?
No.
Okay, motion carries. We'll go on from that to council member items. I'm going to come back down to the end. Bill, do you have anything for today?
Let's move on.
Let's move on. Martha, anything for today?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry to report that David Ward passed away. He was the founder and, well, co-founder and lifelong partner of Marge Ward, who we all know loved Benita Beach, Citizens Association of Benita Beach, and, you know, our hearts go out to their family and to our city, because a lot of people love the Wards. Well, not after that vote. I need a letter of support from you guys, which makes this fun. I'll be going to the Florida League of Cities, and I need to, since I'm the only person from the city attending, I will need to have, and I'm sorry, this is a time-sensitive item, I just need a letter of support from you to appoint me as your voting delegate at the Florida League of Cities. I'm sorry.
Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons, what else you have?
Well, I haven't married this one yet, because I used to be Councilwoman Spear at one point, but thank you so much. The last thing is, I wanted to ask staff, and I don't know if John can answer this question, because I don't see any of the public works folk here, but we did have agenda item for Michigan Street. When will that project begin? Because folks in TV land might want to know about when the Michigan sidewalk is going to happen.
Actually, this is to grant the award, and we hope to get that started within a week or two. The only thing that might hold that up a little bit is that we are trying to coordinate some of the efforts with BSU. BSU has some interest in doing some piping in there, so we're going to try to do both at the same time, if possible, coordinate the contractors. That may result in a little bit of a delay, but I think the ultimate result will be better.
Well, I think so too, and that was a pleasant surprise to find out that while we did the sidewalk, BSU is going to be also able to make some improvements. So thanks very much, and council, thanks for supporting doing that. Mayor, thanks for helping with that, leading that charge to get that sidewalk in. It's going to make a big difference.
And one question, if I could, just to make sure on that letter of support, can you get with me about who it needs to go to and everything? Because I'm not sure that while Carl is out, I know where that goes, so.
Yeah. Sure. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman, Councilman Simons.
You can do it. You can do it.
Simmons, Simmons.
You can do it. There we go. All right, nice. I want, I had a great meeting with Ken from the YMCA, and I'm not going to attempt to butcher his last name. Thank you very much. Wonderful, wonderful man. And we spent some time together and looking forward to getting to know him better, but a man after my own heart, Big East football fan, Steve Coe, and just a dynamite guy. And we talked about a lot of things, but one of the things was a charter high school. And I think for anybody that hasn't heard that, there is going to be, we're going to have further discussions, community involvement, it's, we're gonna, I'm looking, I'm excited about the mere possibility of bringing a charter high school to the city of Benita Springs. So that is one thing that I'm very, very excited about. And I just wanted to let everybody know that with the school year having started, I have been reappointed, if you will, and accepted the reappointment to continue to serve on the curriculum committee with the Lee County School Board. Looking forward to that. The first meeting is in September. And probably don't need to do this, Martha, but if you, for the Florida League of Cities, unfortunately, I can't attend that first meeting, but I will be on the Florida League of Cities as well, as you know, active member. If you can't make it, maybe I could be the alternate for the voting for the city of Benita Springs. Would that be a problem with anybody?
No, that would be great.
I will bring back that at the next meeting and make a motion to do that as our alternate vote.
Okay, great. Fantastic. And then just on a personal note, well, I guess on a professional note to start off, thank you for everybody that voted yesterday. I know there was some confusion. The polling places have changed, and on a very, very personal note, one of my best friends won the Republican nomination for Congress yesterday, Trey Radell. Trey Radell was one of the first people I met when I moved to Florida here. Radell was one of the first people I met when I moved to Florida here. He's a compassionate, dedicated, family man. And get used to that name, Trey Radell, because I think he's gonna be your next congressman. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Stephen?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the two deputies from Lee County Sheriff's Department for being here. You're always here. We always feel better when you are here. And when you have an opportunity to leave, just offer an extension of your hand and say thank you for all you do, because they do, they're wonderful here, and we're very proud of them. Councilwoman Simons and her husband, Bill, and the mayor and I attended the Spirit of Forty-Five at the Colonial Bay Club. It was, uh, it was a wonderful, wonderful presentation to meet so many World War II veterans. And again, the Lee County Sheriff's Office came through with their helicopter, and if you know the Colonial Bay, those windows, they came so close and did a very deep bow and saluted and, and took off. It was a beautiful, beautiful sight. Junior ROTC was there from Estero High School, and also the Sheriff's Honor Guard doing the 21-gun salute. Just a reminder, September 8th, there's going to be another honor flight leaving Fort Myers. It'll be the last one, and people are being asked if they could be there at 6:30 to, you know, applaud the World War II veterans as they depart. It's gonna be at Air Tram Terminal. 9/11 is coming up pretty soon at Riverside Park, so that Patriot Day, we'd love to see everybody present. And finally, I had a distinct opportunity the other day to see the Habitat for Humanity keys turned over to a single mom, and it was just enjoyable. That's all, Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Martin?
Great. I hope that everyone's had an opportunity to check out the Historical Preservation Board's videos. They're up on our website, as well as a link to the Historical Society's website. I'm so proud of that board, and I can't speak enough about those videos explaining the history of eight of our designated properties within the city. It's, they did a great job. I also want to thank our team at CH2M Hill for the wonderful job they did of landscaping under our wonderful banyan tree. The landscaping that they did provides a place for those air routes to come down and take hold into the ground. So, thank you so much for doing that. If you haven't seen it, drive by, take a look. It is wonderful. Also, our youth soccer registration will be taking place at Marni Fields on August 20th. And then very happily, I get to tell you that the Art and Public Places Board met yesterday, and we have a local artist who is willing to come forward to work on a mural for our downtown area. And that was part of something we discussed on our Economic Development Workshop, as being a generator of foot traffic for downtowns. We're very excited about that. So, they're moving forward with wanting to put out the letter of interest to property owners that could have a potential canvas for a mural, and also a letter of interest go, to go out to potential artists to take place in this program. So, it's very exciting. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Steve? Done? All done? Good. We'll move to public comment. At this time, any of the members of the public wish to speak about any old thing, just come on up here.
Good afternoon. For the record, Barbara Barnes Buchanan, formerly Assistant City Manager. And I'd like to applaud the council for your discussion on trying to set forth rules and procedures. Because not speaking for the council members, I did not have the privilege to work with individually, but with all the prior council members, I know historically that it has been extremely inconsistent as to how actions have been handled, how projects have been handled. And I might even use a case in point, and I won't indicate who it is, but it is one of the existing council members. So, today I'm putting on my big girl panties and coming forth and sharing this. And this, and that statement is something I personally found very offensive, and that came from one of the existing council members here. So, if you went back historically, and you went back in the minutes, in the videos, you would, you would probably see just every single one of the council members has had some form of, of an area where they have been somewhat offensive, out of line, speaking without being properly addressed. And so I do applaud you for trying to bring some semblance back to the council. Unfortunately, it's sad to see that it had to be done in such an individualized, public manner. And I have had the opportunity to work very closely with Councilwoman Martha, and she is a very, very hard worker, just like the rest of you council members are, and the prior council members. And I think our city residents really appreciate all the hard work, and they know there are nuances. Some of the ways people communicate are slightly different, and some of the ways people do things are slightly different. And there are real people that accomplish things here at the council. I'm just sorry that I had to make an appearance here after personally having to be subject to inconsistencies applied under prior and existing mayors and administrative staff. Things that happened individually to me. And I did not go public with much, and I still haven't. And I'm not going to, because I love Benita, I believe in Benita, and I want to see us all pull together and make it a better place. So, try to be fair to each other, and not just try to show someone who doesn't seem to operate maybe as what in your mind is the most professional manner, but they still get a lot done. We're all here for the same common good and the same purpose. And it saddens me to see that this is happening right now, and I hope that we can all get together. Bring it up as to how your rules and procedures are now. Make sure everybody understands it. And the mayor is in control, and I know Ben can do an outstanding job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Oh, yes. Very interesting. Rick Steinmeier. I'm probably wrong, but I am very often. Council McIntyre said that he is not allowed to McIntosh.
I'm gonna have to ask you to address council as, in its entirety, one of our stupid little rules.
One of the council people mentioned that they could not talk to one another and under the sun, because it was illegal. But I don't feel that expressing your opinion to another council person on something that's not gonna be voted on is illegal under the sunshine law. I am a firm believer that this could have, I'm sure it's been attempted to be, this problem with NIB, to be addressed internally, personally. I know you all struggle with this situation, but to say it's not, that it's against the law to talk to each other is not right. I wish I could get a clarification on that, which I probably won't.
You will.
And with this six-month postponement of, of being wimpiness, you do it or don't do it, you're hanging a sort of Damocles over Councilwoman's head, and say, oh, I'm gonna get her. I'm gonna get her. I can get her this way, I can get her that way. I, I think you ought to look, go back and look at that and decide whether you really want to put her in that position. And the city has got to be upset about the way you're treating each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? Please do.
Alberto Baier?
I'm a resident of Benita Springs since 1990. Civility is not always proper. I'm quoting. Indignation and visceral reaction is appropriate? What's up with education? I frankly believe that it's incredibly important that what happened today did indeed happen, especially, I am so delighted that Barbara Barnes Buchanan, who is my hero in terms of city management, was here today, because we needed to hear from her, and I hope to hear more from her because of the deplorable manner in which, in, in which her issue was handled, which was frankly, I felt foreign shame, being a passionate citizen of the city. Prohibitions solely through the manager. Okay, I'm so glad that that is perfectly clear now. And I hope it is. I'm emphatically saying, it's gotta be through the management. John Gucciardo, multiple occasions, multiple occasions, he said. But I didn't understand what he meant. Did he mean multiple occasions specifically about Ms. Simons? Simon, right? Not Simon, Simons. Because I, I, I would, I would agree that more than likely it's not only multiple occasions, but super relatively so. Because it is amazing in the fashion in which, in my opinion, Ms. Simons governs, which is, in my opinion, completely out of order. Staff consistently complain. So, what are we doing here with a six-month thing? On, on the one hand, I hear from Mr. Lockhart, oh, he's already apologized, just let it go. Then on the other hand, he says, I want an investigation. Well, I want an investigation too? There should be a note tolerance in terms of certain kinds of behaviors. Let me tell you something about the public. You say you haven't heard from the public. I went into Sneaky Pete, which is the recreation of a cemetery that's closest to my street. You can see Sneaky Pete from my street. Peter Spenger, neighbor across the street from me, a beautiful man, rest in peace, I love him so much, came to me, signed this petition to close down Sneaky Pete. Everybody, I love you, man, but I love music more. And I can go to Sneaky Pete when I'm, I'm a law for, author. So, sometimes I'm compulsive of my writing, so every so often I stop myself and go to Sneaky Pete's, and everybody's my friend. Doesn't matter if I've never seen him before, because it's an awesome place, thanks to Joe. And sometimes the co-owner is not quite so civil, but it's a lovely place. Well, that's my turf. That's my district. Mr. Slakta's, what's she doing at Sneaky Pete's? Why do I say that? Because, just because I walked into Sneaky Pete's after giving a presentation here at the tail end of the meeting when I only have four minutes? And I said, hey, man, let's talk about having a police department that is our own, rather than subcontracting the Lee County Sheriff's Department, which in my opinion do a lousy job, by the way. I show up at Sneaky Pete's, and then all of a sudden, because I left my pouch on a hook underneath the bar counter, on that side of the bar, that's farthest from the door, then my biker friends came in, KW and the gang, come in, and I go to the other side of the bar. So now, I realize that somebody sat in my chair, so I go over to recover my pouch, and Pete rushes to me and says, hey, brother, you can't go beyond this side of the bar. Says, why? Well, because somebody doesn't want you to go there. I says, oh, my goodness, what cloud that person must have. So, if I don't want somebody to come to this side of the bar, go to...
Yeah, okay.
No, no, no. I says, my pouch is right there. Well, Mrs. Simons doesn't want you to go there.
Wrap it up.
So, he forced me out of the bar.
Wait, listen to me. We're, we're, we're trying to keep this to where you're, you're talking to council or myself or the chair.
Right.
So, we, please don't name particular council person. I know it's difficult under these circumstances, but it is our, it is our rule, that you address council and just say a particular council person.
A particular council member, okay? I told him that she takes exception to me.
All right.
I've never done anything to this individual.
Ten seconds.
Okay? So now, I'm forced out of a facility like I'm a fly on the milk, when I'm a significant contributor to this community since 1990, and I'll give you my resume to back it up. And I've been here for longer than her, more than likely, or than him, than the councilman, councilperson.
And now your time, now your time's up, sir. But you'll have another chance, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting to go ahead and continue. But thank you, Mr.
Baier. Many thanks.
Next speaker, please. Anyone wishing to speak again, please come forward.
Morning.
Hey, how's that fishing pond?
Yeah. I was gonna relate that question to this gentleman. I got a little leak on the side of me, and I asked Ben if I can put the dock to the left side of my house and a extension on my patio. So, I'll have to talk to Audrey about that later. I'm gonna be short and sweet. All seven of you folks are professionals. She's very proud of all yous just sitting there. And everybody has many, many assets. And this, everybody carries a little baggage. They got a couple of negatives. But you have to look at it commonsense-wise, the assets outweigh the negatives. And all seven of you, the assets outweigh the negatives. I also believe the mayor, as Peter mentioned before, is the president, and you folks at the council cabinet, and I believe in a chain of command, and a chain of command in this city, till it's changed as the mayor and the council. Have faith in the fellow they hired. He's not here, he's on a cruise, conveniently. That's the city manager, and the city manager has delegation over the staff. I strongly suggest to you gentlemen and ladies, in this day and age, due to current complaints about harassment and so forth, if you have a problem with any staff member, you go through your city council, excuse me, your city manager, and let him deal with it. That's, that's what he's there for. And that is following a chain of command. My background, if I got out of order with an employee in my staff, I've been, been on the mat with my colorful New York English and Irish, delegating a little bit, too much of authority and telling someone that he did wrong in a different way. You learn, you buy mistakes, you get corrected. This woman over here, she's got a wonderful heart, she does her homework, she does a good thing. She made a couple of mistakes. So be it. I agree with Mr. Lockhart. I think it could have been shelved, but I also have respect for this board and the cha, and the, the man sitting there, as far as a chain of command, and that's what seven votes, four to three, it's about. So, also, just to touch on you, in correction of staff and so forth, again, going through the city manager, all of you, I can just, just recommend something. If you did happen to say something uncolorful to staff, it would open up a can of worms that you don't want to deal with. That's why I strongly suggest anything in staff, any place in the city. I don't care if the guy's cutting along the wrong way. You say something, mistake, go through your city council, your manager. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak this time, please come forward.
Deb Harret, Benita Springs. Well, the only, the only part of these allegations worth discussing is, is part B. And we have nothing, there's nothing specific. It's all these ridiculous allegations. How is this not a management issue? Why is this out as a public center? If the, if the rule is to go to, ask for action from city employees to go through the city manager, that's a great rule, but why aren't the city employees told? If they feel pressured to do anything they're not supposed to do, why isn't their pat answer, please see Mr. Schwing, and we'll act on it through Mr. Schwing? Why, why would there be any issue here? This is a management issue. And there's also, when a council person, I would imagine that it is very difficult to differentiate between trying to seek information on behalf of a constituent who has a problem. So, you go to people in the city, you go to people in various organizations, you're just seeking information. Is this, is this being misperceived? And, and again, why isn't this just a management issue? The, the question as to why this came out as a, as a, in the manner it did, is, I think, more alarming than any of the allegations I've, in, in the, in the content. Part A is total bull crap. This is just...
I'm sorry. If you continue to stalk like that, I will have you sat down, okay?
Will you? Okay. What is the, perhaps we, we could have a code of conduct for the public.
You do. There is a code of conduct for the public. You can continue speaking.
And I'd like to see.
Please continue speaking, but refrain from cursing.
Oh, oh, cursing. 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 Okay. And this, this again, all right, I'll stick to my major point, and then I'll finish if I have time.
Good. That would be wonderful.
That's good. You say, people call and complain about people asking too many questions and having too much to say. And they say to you, why don't you do something about that? We have council members who sit on this council, week after week, year after year, and say absolutely nothing. And I think total silence would lead me to question their intelligence and knowledge more than any question they might ask, or the manner in which they might ask it. Why don't you do something about that? It's also specified in the code of conduct that one is supposed to be a full participant in this proceeding. And style issues are absurd. I mean, there have to be some people listening out there who found your commentary to Martha Simons today incredibly patronizing and offensive. And it's hard to believe that a man in a public professional position would speak like that in this day and age. So, pat her on the head and tell her she did a good job today because she wasn't irritant to you. It's not her job to please you. So, if you would like to send me a list of words that I'm not allowed in city council, I would be happy to abide by that. Your delicous, your delicate nature just astounds me. I wouldn't, I wouldn't know if I could make it through a, a, a presentation without offending you. you.
Anyone else like to speak? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Mrs. McCaffrey, and I live at 27671 Tierra del Sol Lane. And for the record, I have doctor's appointments today, so, you know, I must run soon. Just wanted to say that as far as Councilwoman Simons is concerned, she has worked endlessly, and no one's questioning this, she has worked endlessly to help make our neighborhood a more secure place, and I thank you dearly for your assistance in the problems that we had been having in our community for a while. I want to say that if, I just want to say you've done a great job. I've lost my point, I'm very, very nervous here, so let me get it together.
Don't be, it's okay.
Ah, this is, this is what it is. I hear all these allegations, and apparently, it's, it's, it's right here on, it's on film. I try to be a problem solver. If she's not understanding what's going on with her in these meetings, I mean, it's right on video. She can see her behavior, and it could be addressed in that format. I don't know how you guys do things, but I just, I, I know that if I, I know that the dumbest question that you can ask is the one that you don't ask. And if I wanted someone to represent me, I would want the person that speaks up. I know as, and I'm not trying to be condescending or put women down, but yeah, we have a habit of maybe talking, you know, often, a lot. And, but if people aren't understanding what you're saying and what they're doing, and you have a video, and you have people who are willing to sit down and address issues, I'm not understanding why she's, you know, not quite, why, it's, it seems clear to me, I am a, I consider myself a professional in observing behavior, okay? And from watching this forum, I'm feeling like there's more to just speaking out and these things that I'm not, I don't know specifically about, there seems to be more to it than that, I don't know. But if I, if I wanted someone on my side, it would be Martha that I would want, because she does speak up, she tries to get her point across the best way she can, and it, and she clarifies it, and she clarifies it, and she makes sure that what is not understood to her, you understand that it's not understood, and she needs the clarification. So I wish everyone good luck here, and I wish the best for the city, and keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well done. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good afternoon, by now, huh? I came here because my council member was, allegations brought up, and I saw it in the paper, I was a little surprised and shocked. Serious stuff. This is serious stuff. It's the most, maybe the most serious thing that I saw at this meeting. There's other stuff goes on and on, working out all these details of six feet, three feet. That's the daily business. But this is serious. This took it to a level that we had the newspapers here, cameras rolling. So I came to see what this was all about. And I heard nothing from anybody. The most vague allegation, she talks too much, she talks about, simple, vague, vague, vague stuff. But you're ready to have a vote. You were ready to take a vote on my councilperson, did I, whether I support her or not, just my councilperson, so it's affecting me. You're ready to take a vote that could have a serious implications. This, right? I mean, we're just not taking a few minutes to give a little council time to have a little representative and give somebody a little award for picking up trash or doing. This is serious. So at times to come, what do I hear? I hear people mumbling at the microphone. When the council people spoke up the last time they spoke about what they were doing, they were like this, oh, I went to this meeting and I'm going to do this. But when they spoke up these allegations, they were like this. I couldn't hear this person, I couldn't hear that, I guess I can't point or tell, but three of the council people, I couldn't even hear. They're at microphone, I couldn't even hear you. So what does that tell me about these allegations, or how you feel? Where is the backbone? There is no backbone to this kangaroo court, I guess. You did a pretty miserable job, you failed, because it's what it looked like to me. A kangaroo court, I looked up the definition just to make sure, you know? And that's kind of what this looks like. And now you even, and the backbone, well, let's just, you know, there's a lot of support for the councilmen, so everybody's like, it makes you a little nervous, I mean, you do have to take that consideration. I mean, you've got to reprimand somebody that you feel that needs to be that based on information you have, and yet you've got all these supporters. That can be a little intimidating, so, you know, you have to work that out, right? You praise the councilman for the great job they do. How do they do that great job? Their style, they ask questions, they go out and they do stuff. Eight years it's been going on. I mean, I would expect that if this person, my councilperson, was a crazy person that really was out of control, had an alcohol drinking problem like the guy from Cape Coral or something a few months ago that was drunk at the council meeting or something, okay, that's serious stuff. So let's hear the serious allegations. I guess I have to wait six months to hear them. And then you can say, well, here were the allegations, are you ever going to present them? You don't have them, because you know that it's a lot, it would, it would open up a can of worms. But why do, why do you do it like this? Why do you do it like this? Why do you waste my time to come in here for this serious piece of business, and it turned out to be, I mean, it turned out to be wishy-washy stuff, and no, and you can't even vote on it, you postpone it, and you can't even speak up at the microphone. It tells me a lot about the two sides and where this is all about. This is some kind of little vendetta thing. This is wishy-washy stuff because you don't like each other or something. It makes me have a lot of, I lose a lot of confidence in the council when I see you working like this. Not that there aren't problems, but why did it come to this level? It makes me think something else is going on here. Something else is going on, and it's just coming out in this format. And one other thing, I never voted for the president of Benita. We don't have a president of Benita. So just keep that in mind. I've only, maybe, you know, I don't know. It kind of, that's kind of puts the focus on, I don't know, I guess you have to be a third or fourth generation Benitan to be really part of the city. If you move here and you've been here four or five years, well, you're okay, you can vote, but he's been here for... Oh, his life, and he's been here for seven generations, so they're the people that are going to really run Benita. You're a newcomer or something, so, you know.
Okay.
Watch that president.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please, please come forward. Anyone else this time?
Alan Glazier, Stillwell Parkway, Benita Springs. I've been involved with voluntary committees here in Benita, and as most of you all know, are committing, and I've had my run in, I've spoken here publicly about things and been reprimanded at a meeting about it, speaking up. Sometimes things get done, and unfortunately, these things get brought up, and then we air our laundry, and then hopefully we'll get moving on. Sometimes I think things are stonewalled because of a matter of opinion, and people are stubborn, and we need to get moving on. I made my opinions known that I believed in term limits, and I think as a result of this, maybe some of the personalities wouldn't be, have been here at that point. For four years, we might have had a break, and unfortunately, the spirit of the charter has not spoken. And whether it's been changed, and as it's been said it has been, I think that's unfortunate. And I appreciate all of y'all's service, and you know that, but we need to have term limits, and I believe we need to get back to the spirit of the charter, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. No? All right, this time we'll go to the city attorney's report, and she's not here. Diane, why don't you do it for her?
Here she comes.
Watch out, she's been known to trip when she's in a hurry, so watch out.
Thank you, I'll try to focus with my feet here.
There you go.
The first item is pods, those are portable on-demand storage. It came up while we were doing Land Development Code, Chapter Four, whether or not we want to do something with it. I have talked with Chris Campbell from Code Enforcement. We do not have an ordinance, we don't necessarily have a problem that I'm aware of. If we do want to do something, we could do either interchange the LDC four or Property Maintenance Code.
I'm going to make a suggestion, council, and, you know, if I'm messing up here, tell me, but can you go ahead and bring this back at the next meeting and have Chris Campbell here, so he can tell us about how he handles this procedure right now?
Sure.
If he thinks, in fact, that he needs to have this? And, and I think that it'd be useful to have him here. Would that be all right, council?
You get it.
Okay. All right, do you have anything else for us?
Yes, it can wait till the next meeting if you so desire, and that was in Administrative Appeals and the Land Development Code, it's a very rare situation, we get into them. This is one of those philosophical moments where I need your input if you want me to do an amendment to the Land Development Code, so that we put in a time distance as well as final agency action.
This is not time critical?
This is not time critical.
Council, is that okay to bring this to the next meeting?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
City managers' report.
The first two items on your list are the standard ones for the second meeting of the month, the financial report and the monthly projects report, and as is Carl's usual approach on this, I'd like to just leave this open. If you have any specific questions for us at this time, or staff individually, we're available.
Okay. I think we're okay, and I think we're going to go ahead and forward the library up and...
If you could, we had the library issue listed last, but...
Let's go ahead and bring that up right now.
We do have staff members from the county here, they are available to answer questions if you so desire, you know, county charges a small amount for overdue books, I don't know what they charge for overdue staff, so we'd like to get them out of here if we can.
That's fine. Do they have a presentation at this number?
No, no, just here to answer questions if you have any for them.
Okay. Could you come on up? Bill has, Bill has a question for you.
While they're coming up, I can kind of summarize what we've put together in the green sheet, if that's okay?
Yeah, go ahead, that would be good, that would get us started off.
What I tried to do is to lay out... Just come back if you want me.
No, stay right there.
Yes, sir. What I tried to do is to lay out for you an idea of what the status is on the project itself, that is, the options for the actual facility, and this grew out of our budget workshop talks. What you have in front of you as part of the packet is the latest set of option reviews that the county staff has put together. My understanding is that they'll be presenting at, to the Board of County Commissioners sometime in the upcoming months. I'm not exactly sure what the timetable is on that, but this, as you can see from the data on it, is a very fresh product. It is substantially the same as what we discussed with you a few months back, in that they have looked at the existing building, whether or not it can be retrofit, they have looked at the existing site to see if it made sense to tear down and rebuild on that site, and they also looked at some vacant properties, as well as some empty vacant big, big box buildings, to see if any of those were viable. They added a lot more detail to their analysis than from what we got a few months back, but the conclusion is substantially the same. That is, that the, from a staff perspective, the recommendation would be, if it's acted on, to use the existing site to tear down and rebuild a facility at the site, approximately 24,000 square feet, in the about, generally speaking, $12 million range. Of course, all of that is dependent on funding, and as we indicated to you a few months back, and this situation has not changed, that from county staff's perspective, the Board of County Commissioners at some point, and hopefully near future, will have to deal with the issue of their library millage rate, not only to address potential new capital projects such as ours, but also to, to address their operating issues. Sheldon can probably speak to that in much more detail if you need him to, but that is a separate issue, at least separate and apart from what building might be able to be constructed if the funding is available.
Okay, good. Why don't you go ahead and let us know what you've got going on there, and I know there's some challenges there with the millage rate and that type of thing, and it'd be good, good for us to hear that from you.
Mayor, thank you. Sheldon Kay, for the record, Director of the Lee County Library System, Mayor and council, councilpeople, thank you very much for your hospitality. It's been my pleasure to be meeting with you, actually, you know, with you and the committee that you, you were kind enough to set up pretty continuously, so this is feeling like a very familiar territory for me. As John said, really, the most immediate issue coming up is going to be adjusting our millage rate. And just to, to refresh your memories, it was a few years, about three or four years ago, that the commission deliberately lowered the millage rate deliberately to an amount that was less, that would generate income less than our operating budget. It was, it generated income substantially less than our operating budget. What they didn't anticipate when they did that was that the bottom fell out of the, of the real estate market, the value of real estate, and, and so the, the, the amount of money that the millage rate generated, not only was, was a calculated less amount, but it was an uncalculated even greater, greater amount less than our operating budget, if you'll forgive that construction. So, in any, in any case, where we stand now is that our millage rate is generating revenue of about nine or $10 million a year, less than our operating budget. The purpose for lowering the millage rate was, was to require the library to, to spend down a fund balance. That, that will, by the end of this, by the end of the fiscal year that starts in October, so in other words, in the next fiscal year, by the time that year ends, we will have funds insufficient in our, in our reserve account to subsidize the library for the following year going forward. So, so in other words, if we're going to sustain anything like the current level of, of our operations, you know, the commission will be taking up the matter of readjusting the millage rate at this time next year. And, you know, I spoke with the county manager before coming here, and our, and you'll forgive me if I can make a little bit of an appeal here, but our sincere hope is that you'll, at the time when the commission takes this matter up, that, that you and your colleagues here in Benita Springs will support an adjustment of the millage rate that will bring revenues that are in line with our current level of spending.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mayor.
You can stick around for, yes, go ahead.
I'd like to add one other point to what Sheldon just made, and Sheldon, correct me if I'm wrong on the numbers, but within that time period, when the millage rate was reduced, you know, as a, as a strategy basically to deal with the reserves, and at the same time that they took the additional reduction on the property values, the operating budget for the library system was also reduced from, if I, correct me if I'm wrong on the numbers, but I think it was around $20 million, $29 million a year to about $24, $25 million a year. So there was, I think, an attempt on the part of library staff to make appropriate adjustments downward in their operating expenses at the same time. Don't want to give the impression that they have somehow been immune from what we have all been experiencing in terms of operating.
John, thank you. Modesty prevented me from saying that, but that's exactly true. We have, we took a real big reduction in our operating budget, and as well as the size of our staff and the amount of, just general expenses, so we did try to be responsible in that way.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for the gentleman? Anybody?
No, you've got them all.
Bill?
Thank you. Sheldon, thank you, thank you for coming. So in what year do you anticipate sufficient revenues, not only to build a library for us, but also to take care of your operating deficit, which is not, we're not party to that, but I know how large it is? It's, how are you going to overcome that $7 million short that you're having currently?
Well, it's actually a little bit more than seven, councilman, but the, our intention is to come forward at this time next year with a, I mean, on our behalf, county administration will come forward next year with a proposal to adjust the millage rate, and I think you have a copy of a presentation I made a few months ago to the city council, or the county commissioners about this subject. And I, so I presented a kind of two-tiered approach. One is what would need to happen to the millage rate in order to bring revenues in line with expenditures. The second one is what would, what additional millage would have to be... The second one is what additional millage would have to be requested in order to fund the Benita Springs Library. And we just put onto the table a few scenarios. Probably the most practical one would be to, over a five-year period of time, a millage rate would probably be a nickel, at least as it looked a few months ago. Five cents on the millage, on the, right, on the millage rate over five years would enable us to fund a building of the manner in which we're planning to.
And also bring your deficit in your operating budget to...
Oh, no, that would be an additional amount, Councilman.
Well, can you give me a, as you know, we've been a donor community for as long as I can remember, 2000. And if, in fact, you get the millage increase that you anticipate, which there was two, one was 55 cents and one was 62 cents.
Right.
The amount of money that the city, our city will give you, if it's 55 cents, I think it's about 3.9 million, if that, you know, just to give you the scenario. So that means we'll actually be paying, because the operating expenses are 1.4 million, pretty consistent over the years. So, we're gonna be giving you more money, and at the same time, here we are, sitting here with a library that's extinct. And is it probably five years down the road before you'll be able to actually do something for us?
This is a decision that will be more than mine, Councilman, so you'll forgive me. But I'm the one who's standing right in front of you. As, you know, as projects go, you know, there's a planning time, and then there's a building time. And it would be my intention to attempt to move forward with planning once we knew that the millage rate was sufficient to fund the project. So, you know, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't wait, if my advice were followed, we wouldn't wait for five years after the time that the millage rate was adjusted in order to even start to think about Benita Springs. We would be, we would have the knowledge, that we would have the funding, and it would be my hope, my hope, I can't speak for the commission, please.
I realize that.
But it would be my hope that we could move forward then.
The other thing is perhaps when you're gonna have some new commissioners also coming on board, it looks like in November. It'd be nice to know if they would give us some indication after the budget's adopted, that we have some concrete facts, because that's what the public wants to have, the facts. And I know you're in a situation where you can just tell us where you are. I appreciate you coming, but I really think we need to have something in concrete this time, instead of, and I know you're moving along with, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, Council, did you want to, we, John and I have been talking about this, and we think that probably what you may want to consider the next step is to go ahead and allow our committee to be put back together again, so they can take in this new information and maybe perhaps make a recommendation to our council as to whether we should support the proposal that the library people are putting on, or not support it. Would that be alright?
I think that's a great idea. Whatever we can do to move, that's fine.
It's a good group of people we put together there. And John, could you go ahead and see if you can't get them to go ahead and meet again?
Given that, it seems like that's the direction of council at this point. We will try to reconvene the original members of the task force. See if that's possible, before we reach out to new members. And if it makes sense to council, the first thing I would like to have them take a look at is the proposal that county staff has put together, which they will be presenting at some point to the Board of County Commissioners to get their kind of feel for where that seems to be going. And then, of course, we'll be, continue to work with county staff, not only on the timing of their presentation, but to see what other progress is made along some of the other lines that we've been working on. I think that that can be very effective. I think the group can be a great help to the council in terms of kind of coming up with some recommendations and specific actions that council might want to take. And we'll try to get that task force moving on that as quickly as possible. I would ask, though, that in the meantime, staff, the understanding is the staff will continue to work with county staff to keep going through these paces. And that the question of funding, when it is broached, is probably more appropriately a council-to-commission issue. Let staff work on the logistics of where the project might be going, if that makes sense.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
I spoke to Steve Brown yesterday, and he sent me an email, so he knows that there's a possibility.
Thank you, Bill. Janet?
I think that if we're going to convene our group, there's a topic that I think should be also included, and that is, what is the future of a library? And as we move forward with building a brand-new facility, we want it to be, you know, right on the cutting edge of more, you know, technology and what will this library do for us for, to serve many purposes for the community?
May I, may I please?
Absolutely.
That's a wonderful question.
No, I've had enough of you. Of course, go ahead.
That's a wonderful question. And Councilwoman, one of the things I'm so proud of, and this, you know, we've had a few big projects since I've had the privilege of being here. Every one has grown on the last. So we've not built the same library, we've been, we're very, very attentive to changes in the way people use their libraries, and we've built on that, and we will continue to do that. Our library system has never been busier than it is right now. Six or seven, well, I came here six years ago, a little bit before I came here, about five million items a year, sorry, 3 million items a year were borrowed from the library system. We're heading, last year was over 6 million, and we continue to grow. So, we pay a lot of attention to how people are using the libraries, and we nurture that. We give them what they want.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, good.
Thank you for, that's a great question.
Well, thank you. And Peter?
Thank you, and thank you very much for coming today.
It's a real pleasure, I appreciate it.
You know, thanks a lot. And you've heard me say it before, and you'll hear me say it again. I'm a very good poker player, and I guess I just don't see...
Poker night's Tuesday, by the way.
Is it? Whereabouts?
My house.
Okay, oh, okay.
Bring plenty of money. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I just don't see the need, and I'm all in favor of this task force, and I can't wait to see what they recommend. Believe me, I wholeheartedly support that. But I also don't believe in throwing good money after bad, and I'm sorry to be that blunt. That's the feeling I have right now. And I don't see a need, or I'd have to be, my arm would really have to be twisted to support any kind of a millage increase, knowing that we're operating at the deficit that we're operating at, seeing our current facility. And to take it a step further, I have also thrown out there, and I'm still of this mindset, that if the city of Benita Springs were to withdraw from the Lee County Public Library System and run our own show, I think, in fact, I know, things would be a whole lot different. And I guess for now, I'll just leave it at that. But that's exactly where I am at the moment, thank you.
And that is one of the topics that will be discussed by this committee there, as I haven't spoken about it again. Audrey, go ahead.
Thank you, I just want to point out that the way we structured Resolution 10-34 when we established the library committee, they were to dissolve once they gave their final recommendation. So that group is dissolved, so I do need to bring up a green sheet and resolution at your next meeting to form them again. But I took some notes with the changes that you mentioned today.
Good, so let it be written, so let it be done.
Thank you.
That's why we're all here, by the way. All right, thank you very much, any other questions? Yes, Martha?
Thank you, Mayor. Have we had, I've heard three different numbers for, both from yourself, from the task force, from a library analysis study that we had, gazillion years ago, Ben was here, I was here. One was, that analysis was, we're gonna build a 60,000-square-foot library, that's what we needed. Okay, so Councilwoman Martin brings up a very fine point. Technology has changed the use of a library, it might condense itself. So, the task force recommends 34,000. I heard you say 24,000. I don't know what we're gonna end up with, but it's getting smaller, and the money's getting, we're sending you more. So I'm just concerned about that. And can you tell me, is there an accredited, I'm sure there is, and I feel for the position that you're in, you know?
No, I welcome.
Yeah, well, you're a library man, and I know you probably want to see the best libraries built, but you're in a difficult position because of the financials. So, you know, you're not making those decisions, and that's difficult. What, is there an accredited organization or libraries that can tell us what kind of library, what size library, what style of library even so, that we need in this community?
That was, that would have been a lot easier to answer in another era. Most libraries, statewide libraries have used a statewide-generated standards that we've gone by. But, you know, with the world having changed so much, and budgets becoming so impossible, measuring your success against standards has become less and less practical. So, we look to good practices, we look to what our neighbors are doing, and I can, I can, you know, I've been doing this for a little over 40 years in a few different places. And this, the library system we have here is just outstanding compared to other places. So, I don't know quite else how to quantify that. We look at statistics all the time, but it would take me a while to quantify, you know, to give you a more substantial answer.
Well, it seems like we've been working on this for a while. So, if there's some way to just say, Benita Springs, we're gonna build you this, because that's what you need, and, you know, boom. I'd just like to hear that from you guys. I know, I hear what you're saying.
But just to answer about the size, I'm sorry, Councilperson.
No, it's okay, sir.
Just about the size. You know, I think one looks to the logic of the existing system in order to find, you know, what's appropriate as far as development is concerned. And so we have, like, regional libraries, none of which is great, well, almost none of which is greater than 40,000 square feet. There's six of those, and then the other libraries are, you know, are down in size from that. So, for this, the size community that's here, and its proximity to the South County Regional Library, 25,000-square-foot library was actually at the upper edge in our system for this, for this size community.
Thank you, thank you for your answer.
So we would, so we would be actually pushing the envelope at 25,000.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the question.
Council, any other questions? All right, well, good, thank you very much for taking, Dan, sorry for the long wait.
It's been my privilege, thank you all.
It's our privilege, thank you very much. John, anything to add there?
No, I think we've got a consensus and a direction from the council.
And Audrey's gonna go ahead and put the green sheet together for us. All right, what do you got next?
We've got two other items. Jim is gonna be presenting first on, again, these are both two items that came out of the discussions generated at the budget workshop on the 17th.
Hey, Jim, item C.
Thank you, let's be very brief. We talked about the West Terry Street, Old 41 intersection at the meeting. This is the way it's configured presently. You have one left-turn lane, one straight-through, one right-turn. When you get four, about four cars in here, five cars, well then what happens? Is traffic gets backed up because of the straight-through, the right-turn, people can't get up there and go through. So what I'm looking at is working within the confines of this intersection right now, without doing anything outside of it. There's an existing concrete barrier here, I'd like to remove it. And we can put two left-turn lanes in, move the right-turn lane over. That would give us almost triple the stacking capacity in the left-turn lane. What I would like to propose is going here and overlay new asphalt in all the intersection, re-stripe it, make it look fresh and new. The estimate's under $25,000 for this, to do this. And I think we're gonna see a big impact on the traffic on West Terry Street of congestion we have from time to time. That's the first, does anyone have any questions?
Could you go back to the original slide?
Yes, sir.
So you're not taking any of the property?
No, sir, I'm staying within the curbs. All I'm doing is reconfiguring the lane there and making use of everything.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
And I guess to that point, could we, what would the process be if we were to acquire a little bit of that land on the north side of the street? Tripling the capacity currently, however, looking way down the road to avoid having to get here again and maybe do it again, because that triple capacity wouldn't be enough?
Well, I think you're gonna impact that business there, where you'd have to take...
Oh, no, I certainly get that, I certainly understand that. Just throwing it out there.
I think that when we change this, you're gonna see a big change there. I think this is gonna make a definite change in congestion.
And I think that's your point, is that you'd like to do this because it's relatively inexpensive, and then you can see what happens and how it affects traffic patterns.
Correct.
Right, and then we can kind of go from there. If that worked, well then, we can see what kind of capacity we can get out of it.
And if we approach this incrementally, it's not as if that was a situation where if we needed to go down that path, this would be money that wasn't well-spent. We wouldn't be undoing something that we have done, we would just be adding to it.
I mean, the facility's there, and I'm just trying to use everything and put it all to good use.
Sure, 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 just throwing it out there for, to see what the consensus was, I guess I...
No, it's good.
I guess I know now, awesome things.
Is there a bit of a misalignment with the straight east to west?
Yes, there is. But we will stripe that, they'll be striping through there, to guide people through there. They'll be striping for the left-turn also, to keep those people separated.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. Any other questions before we carry on?
Where's the sidewalk? I can't really see from here with the...
Sidewalk is right here, I'm redoing this sidewalk and realigning it right across here.
That is a sweet laser stroke there, thank you.
Now it's on your way.
I am really glad to see that, and I want to thank you, Jim, for getting that done with the railroad.
Probably be in the next week, we'll be working on that. The second question you had for me, Mayor, was to look at Pine Avenue and West Terry Street. And this is the way it exists now. What do you have, you have two-way traffic on all the streets, there's no right-turn, no left-turn traffic. Well, the issue here is you can't do anything with that intersection without going full-blown and rebuilding, totally rebuilding the intersection. And that was a big part of what we had in the West Terry Street project. When I look at trying to do something along here and adding a lane, I've got utilities here that just, just really, real big issues. But what I did come up with, that we can think about, is that we could put a designated right-turn lane in here. Since half the traffic turns right, half the traffic turns left, and only 5% goes north, or I'm sorry, goes south, we could make this into a left-turn or straight. We could build this right-turning here without very little conflict, it's city property. I don't, in my report, I didn't recommend doing that. Do we see what happens with the improvements I first talked about there? Plus, we have Shangri-La Road, which I think is going to impact the traffic movement. But this is a relatively inexpensive thing to do, that we could relieve traffic on Pine itself.
Do you have traffic, good traffic data on this, to where that east-to-north movement, see how much is coming off there? In other words, the traffic's flowing east and turning to the north?
That's about 45 days old.
About 45 days old? Is that movement a problem, blocking traffic there?
I don't have, knowing whether it's blocking it or not, I have the traffic movement.
Yeah, okay.
But I can't tell you, I've got the peak times. I do know that the traffic here is very well-split, left and right. So I'm sure we have some issues out here, but you're talking about a major project, I could do that. But as I told you at the budget meeting, you know, this traffic has really gone down in the last four years.
All right, so it's good, and again, your recommendation is just kind of a wait-and-see on this.
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Janet?
My question would be about the, if, when, and if we do something, would we address the realignment of the sidewalk there? The way it jogs, it's really not a good flow.
I can make it work pretty easily. It works like what we call a pork chop, and we have those all over, a lot of places all over town, where you have a safety area here. You know, this sidewalk here, I'd bring it right on down here and tie it in here.
Okay, I'm talking across...
It's fairly easy.
Across Pine.
Well, it...
Would you be able to tie that...
This is always the problem.
Right.
Still have that same problem now.
Exactly.
It's not the best situation in the world, but it does work. But this would be a relatively inexpensive thing to do, if council wanted to move forward with it sometime.
Okay.
The third issue on the green sheet was, we have a traffic signal here that we put in as a temporary four years ago, we thought we was gonna be building that within the year there, four years ago. We've kind of overstayed our, on this thing, the vendor still owns this, and so we need, we probably need to buy this, it's gonna be to our benefit to purchase, it's gonna be here a while. It's a good system, it's concrete poles, roughly, no problem. But we did not own that system. It was just there for a temporary till we could get in and build that.
Okay, are you looking for action at this point on that particular item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, go ahead, Steve.
Question, that proposed lane, would that be a yield or stop sign, or...
It would be a yield.
A yield.
And I would build that a little bit where I can get a little bit of a stack in here, so I can get people off this lane here, put a stack in here, and it'd be a... so I can get people off this lane here. Put a stack in here and it'd be a yield here.
Okay.
So again, the recommendation at this time would be three parts. Basically, one to let us go ahead and work on the West Terry Old Forty-One intersection. Uh, two would be to purchase outright that traffic signal. It is serving the function that we need it to do and it would not be cost-effective to continue to lease it. And the third would be to hold off on any improvements on Pine until we see what the results of the West Terry Old Forty-One.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I'd make such a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second? Any other discussion?
Just a quick concern. Just a quick concern is that while we want to improve traffic, uh, those kids cross, that's their sidewalk where they cross. And finally, we're getting a sidewalk down near the other end. So I just want to make sure we figure out how we're gonna get those kids across that street safely. That's about it, Jim. Thanks.
Talking about back on West Terry, that West Terry and Old Forty-One?
No, sir. They're at, um, Pine and, uh, West Terry because you're widening up the intersection now where the children have to be in the street more.
Well, at this point, we're not gonna be.
No, we're not gonna do that, but I'm just, yeah.
I'm just giving you what I'm thinking. It can happen roughly inexpensively if, if we want to do something there in the future.
Sounds good.
It was just a brainstorm.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, Jim, you got something else for us, right?
I have the Imperial Street, I'm sorry, Imperial Parkway, uh, landscaping at the July seventeenth budget. You asked me to come back with a Lee County Core Level landscape for Benita Beach Road to East Terry Street. Uh, rather than show you drawings of a design, uh, the county has upgraded their core level type of landscaping. And on Three Oaks Parkway just north of Corkscrewe, they have recently made those plantings. And so I brought you some photos here of, of, um, of what that core level would consist of. So, four photos. And.
Look at that.
That's a plant list we're looking at. Our estimate's ninety-five thousand dollars to do that. We did, uh, in two thousand and six, I believe, we had a full-blown, uh, enhanced landscaping for this area. It has ninety cent, ninety percent plans. We did a new cost estimate. It was like a little over four hundred thousand dollars to do the medians. So this is the, the new core level for, um, Lee County. And if you'd like to take a drive up there and take a look at that, it would be a good, good drive. It's very much above what they've done in the past. So.
All right, Jim, this is a much better, better way to look at it than looking at a drawing.
That's what I thought you liked.
Nicely done. Nicely done. Um, and so, uh, Council, um, what's your pleasure on this? Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve, but I have a question once it's second and so.
Why don't you go ahead and make a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
We'll see where we go from there. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in several seconds. Uh, and go ahead, go ahead.
Quick question. Um, I drove by there the other day just to make sure. It, it looks like it's full of weeds and hasn't been manicured for quite a while. Is that us? Is that the county?
That's, that's county.
How about?
Oh, you, I'm sorry. Are you talking about, you're talking about Imperial Orange Section?
Yeah.
I think it was just recently mowed this week. It's on a two-week cycle, I think, for mowing this time of the year, Councilman.
Okay, but it looked like something that hadn't been taken care of for a while. That's fine. Secondly, uh, Peter Flynn and I give him credit for prodding me on this, but have we taken a good look at the, at the last traffic study, two thousand and six, compared it to what we would think it would be today and looked at that capital budget, see if there's any money we could retrieve out of the Capitol Road budget? I'm sure we may have, but I'm not asking for an answer. I'm just asking if you would take a look at our Capitol Road budget and compare it to the traffic study for two thousand and six, see if we have any significant changes because of the changes in demographics there.
Are you, are you talking about on this section, Councilman?
I'm talking about broadly.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I'm not trying to give you a direction.
Understood.
But I'd like to know if there's, if there's money to be saved in that capital budget.
There is before council for the new budget, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, I think, in the landscape plan. If the council keeps that in there, this would, if we did this, it's spent about half of it.
Okay.
This is irrigation, includes irrigation also for the plants, rip irrigation.
I, I do also want to point out that, um, while Jim is presenting the core level, um, and obviously we're gonna wait for direction from council on how they want to move on that, um, the Tree Committee, I guess, has just recently been shown this. I understand they may have some input. Um, I'm not sure if that's gonna go directly to council or through staff to council. Uh, but we, obviously we'll be looking forward to seeing what they have to say, um, as long as it doesn't, um, increase any of the either capital costs going in or the operational costs at the end, depending on what they recommend. We may bring this back to council. Uh, but again, our recommendation at this point is to go ahead with, uh, the county's core level.
Yeah, and I, and I think that that's probably the way to do it is to go ahead and give you authorization to proceed this way. Let the Tree Committee take a look at it. They have suggestions. You can bring it back to us. And, uh, now along with this, we have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve this. Uh, and we'll go ahead and, and take care of that motion. Are you gonna look for some directions so far as options on irrigation as well?
Uh, I'm gonna be looking for options for if you want, where you want to go with the next landscaping. Irrigation's included in this.
Okay, good.
So it's like, I mean, if I'm gonna spend half of my budget, where do you want to go next? I'm a guy who wants to get things done.
Okay, a motion and a second on table for this. Uh, yes.
How much have you figured in the operating cost after it's installed in terms of how much it's gonna cost us to maintain it?
Uh, Councilman, very good question. But this is, this is not going to increase very much because it's gonna be mainly trees, plant-type material. We, we mow it anyway. It's not gonna be like we have on US Forty-One where I've always warned the council, anytime they spend money for landscaping, you're not done. You're gonna spend money from now on. This will not, this is not gonna hit your pocketbook that hard. You're gonna have a little irrigation cost.
I recall you telling me that before. Thank you very much.
Okay, Martha?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to see us, um, have the Tree Committee review for their input of what to put in here because, um, I'm not real crazy about what happens to crepe myrtle and Jetrofa a year long. Um, but I know that we have set certain standards and certain plants in the city of Benita Springs. And I would like to see us differentiate ourselves from the county. So when you come into Benita Springs, you know we're in Benita Springs. It looks lovely. And so I, I, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, Pete.
I'm sorry, Janet's trying to get you.
Oh, you got it.
Hi. Uh, Tree Committee did look at the plans yesterday. And their involvement in it was more of that a couple of the choices that the county had chosen were very expensive trees. And they thought we could get more bang for our buck with some of the other ones that they would probably recommend. So, uh, they're looking at more in density, uh, accomplishing, you know, what we want to happen out there than the price of a certain tree.
But they're still gonna make a recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, no, I was, okay. I mean, I guess we'll have to just wait and see. But I concur with Councilwoman Simons. I would like to, um, economically, feasibly, conservatively as we can, make a statement. How's that with our trees?
Yep.
With our landscape?
Well, and the beauty about this is that, uh, once, once you have your core level in there, you can always supplement that and, and differentiate yourself from there. That's for sure.
Yeah.
So, anyway, uh, motion and a second still standing with the, with knowing that there, that the Tree Committee is likely to come back and make some recommendations so we can save some money and differentiate ourselves. How about that? Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
So you really want us to make another decision today, yeah?
Not today.
Good. Thank you very much.
God bless you.
Well done.
I'm, I'm gonna ask Jim to stay up there for just a minute so I can embarrass him.
Good.
Ooh.
That's the last, that's the last of our items. Uh, but along the lines of some of these public works projects, I wanted to say a couple of things. One is that the new Public Works Director will be starting as of next week. So we'll be probably bringing him around for introductions. I wanted to thank Jim publicly for the role that he's played in this interim period as the interim Director of Public Works has done, as far as I'm concerned, an incredible job of not only keeping the ship moving forward, but actually, uh, making improvements to our processes, our procedures. And I want to thank him for that publicly. Uh, I also want to remind the council that, again, pursuant to the conversations we had with you at the budget, that our job is not done now that we've brought these two in terms of the road projects. We are also, now that we have direction on, on West Terry, we're gonna be bringing you back some specificity on Old Forty-One south of Benita Beach Road. That's, you identified as your next priority. We're also gonna be bringing back a more comprehensive look at the Carolina-US Forty-One Benita Beach Road entire intersection. On the landscaping, now again, that we have your direction on this segment, we're gonna be going through the prioritized segments that you identified at the budget workshop and periodically bringing you back some more, uh, recommendations so we keep these things going.
Good deal. Good deal. And Jim, I gotta tell you, well done on these presentations, these presentations you've given lately. Top-notch. Excellent. Okay, uh, do you have anything else for us before, that's it? Uh, would you like to prove the minutes, Council?
So moved.
Motion to approve a minute and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Good. Public comment. Anyone wishing to speak at this time, please come forward.
Oh, boy.
It's okay, take your time. Yeah, we got all time.
For the record, Kath Himmograph, and I'm sorry to have to drag this meeting out more, but if I went home today without stating my feelings, I'd kick myself a hundred times. I want to preface this by saying I have not had any, any personal discussion with anybody sitting up there, including the mayor, who I have known since he was fourteen years old. I'm a thirty-year resident here, over forty-year property owner. And I'm basing my.
Four, sorry.
I'm basing my comments, not so much in what everyone said, but what I've, what I've observed. Uh, prior to my husband's passing away, we attended quite a few meetings. But since he died, I don't think I've missed one, well, maybe a couple of meetings in the last three and a half years. And I want everyone to know who's here, who was here, who's watching, and all of you, that everything that is written here is a hundred percent true. And I know it was not, the decision was not reached lightly. And this didn't happen six months, a year, or anything. This has been building up. And people have to realize that it has been tried to be rectified. And let me tell you something, folks. If you don't believe this, you're either looking through rose-colored glasses or you've got your blinders on. I mean, it is the truth. There's no exaggerations. Now, I'm not privy to, I, I mean, I work, I'm on special events committees. I work closely. I don't, I have not discussed this. I do talk to people who are reliable. And I want to tell you, those you watching, that not so much what has been observed here in council, but what so many people keep saying, well, what are all these things that we don't know about with, say, staff? I want to warn everybody. If for some reason somebody pushes to have some of these allegations brought out in public, be careful what you wish for because you just might get it. I think you'd be shocked. I hope I remember everything I wanted to say. And thank you so much for letting me speak.
You're quite welcome. Uh, anyone else like to speak this time? Please come forward.
Alberto Bayer again. It's such a limited timeframe. It's hard to get through. I'm gonna take, uh, the lead of Alan Glaser. What a wonderful mentor for me. With very few words and with a very, um, pleasant and soft demeanor, he can get his point across perhaps in a manner that you are heard more closely. I personally take exception to a few things. I don't like the way that the system works. How can it be possible that I express my concerns about any given council person if I can't even address who I'm talking about? It's ridiculous, in my opinion. There's certain people in our government that, in my opinion, instead of helping, hurt significantly. Right at the tail end of my presentation the last time, I said, don't upset people like me that are influential, that can help build our treasury. If our treasury gets built up, a lot of these negative energies will be reduced because we're a city with a significant surplus. Right after I get done doing that, I end up thrown out of my bar of choice that I can walk to because some individual tells the, one of the owners whatever, and the, has enough clout to actually ruin my evening. That's, that's really frankly astonishing. I felt like a fly on the milk when I got thrown out of the facility. I wonder how any of you would have felt under the same circumstances, just because my pouch was hung under the bar top where that individual happened to be sitting, and I was just gonna retrieve it. So having done absolutely nothing wrong, everybody's been asking me, what did you do to get thrown out of that place? I did absolutely nothing. I gave a presentation at City Council. That individual most of not liked what I said. I understand she's a very good friend of the captain of the Lee County Sheriff Department. As a matter of fact, when she actually responded to my request for her to write me a letter saying that my character is impeccable, in her opinion, so that I could show it to Pete, what she answers in reply, she copies to Captain Kathy Wearden. I mean, if that is not a sign that there's a malicious agenda with these two friends that love each other so much, which in my opinion are not a contribution to the city, that is the woman that I got wrongfully incarcerated because of that captain. It's why I lived three months in jail without merit. Charges were fabricated. It's, there's not allegations. These are facts. What I'm saying about the sneaky Pete's thing, it's fact. You want supporting documentation, I'll give you compelling and substantial. How do we do? How do we citizens who are here trying to have a high quality of life, help ourselves protect from these influences that have malicious intentions and enough clout to disfavor an individual in this city that has done nothing that I know of? What have I done to anybody in this city? I've been a source of, uh, entrepreneurially. I've, I've, I'm a real estate and mortgage broker of the. And all I have generated is money to the treasury. My existence in this city represents a lot of money to the treasury.
All right. Thank, thank you, Alberto. Thank you very much. And, uh, time's up. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak except for this young lady who's walking up here? Please come forward. Yeah, it didn't, didn't work.
Uh, for the record, Lori Nelson. This makes time number two in twelve years. I have come before this council to make a comment. Uh, I want to commend you for taking on this difficult subject. I know that nobody wanted to do it. Um, the notion that it's out of pure annoyance, uh, is, is absurd and that she's a woman is also absurd. Believe me, he does not have a timid or meek wife. Uh, so it is not, it's not a woman thing. Um, I have watched probably every meeting for the last twelve years, and I see what goes on, on the dais. We all see it from home. We see the eye rolls. We see the note passing. We see the talking amongst each other. It intimidates the people that come up here and talk if you show your expression of what they're saying by eye-rolling or frowning. Um, my other comment is I'm here for the staff. Everyone wants to know why the specific allegations are not brought out. I, I fear that it's fear. Um, they, they understand what the retribution could be if they come out. Um, it's intimidating when a council person comes up to them and tells them to do something. Yes, the code says to go to the, to, uh, city manager, but that's, it's easier said than done when you've got a council person standing in front of you demanding something. So I commend you. I hope you'll give direction to staff to do that and to go to the city manager when they feel that they're being pressured by a particular council person. And I'm sure you're all guilty of it at one time or another. Uh, because you, you want something and you, your, your direct line is to go to that staff person. But staff fears getting up here and defending themselves. And I just hope that you'll look out for them because they're the ones who are paying for this. I know that the mayor can handle the meetings with a firmer hand if he chooses to. So please, look out for your staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Audrey, could you get that young lady's phone number so I can call her later?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Deb Harret, Benita Springs, to continue this unfortunate subject. Again, allegations A. Um, you know, just, I, I can't even, in, in the A part, all, everybody up there has done everything you accuse her of, every last one of you. And so what? So what? Uh, you, you can't be that big of a shrinking violet. Uh, there's nobody screaming here. There's nobody insulting anybody.